Let's see, we're dropping a quarter point on mortgages now, right?
No.
It hasn't dribbled down that far yet.
Well, mortgage rates tend to move in anticipation of what they think the Fed is going to do.
You say they've moved already?
So they've already kind of built that in, yeah.
What is 30-year now?
Three and three-quarters.
Anything over four is not too bad.
Yeah.
They're still getting blamed to 0.001 percent on savings. I never could understand that.
Low rates are great when you want to borrow money.
Ready to go? All fired up?
Yeah, but they're so low, it's kind of worth it.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled September council meeting. It is September 18th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, on the agenda this evening is the consent schedule, or consent calendar, excuse me. Are there any questions about that? If not, make a...
I'll move.
Move. Second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryan. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open forum. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council with any concerns outside of what's on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to C2, and that is an update from Brian Farrell, the manager of Spirits.
Thank you for having me here. For you people that do not know me, Mike, I'm Brian Farrell. I manage Spirits in Nisswa. And Fred, I'm Brian Farrell. Just kidding.
Is that your car? Is that your yellow car?
Yeah, I wish that was my yellow car right there. It just happened to be a really sweet picture. I just want to show you that. That is what we all like to see, is a full parking lot. There's clouds in the sky, but no rain, and this is an ideal day at Spirits in Nisswa, definitely. We're really excited because this will be the first year that we are projected to break 3 million in sales. And what I really like about this chart is you look at, it's continually going up. And if we looked back, if we look back at 2013 to 2019, and if we did an average, it's about a 10% increase in sales, which is fantastic. It's manageable. Sometimes we would like to see our sales double, but that is not manageable for anybody. So I'm really pleased at how the growth is going. 2018 had a really nice spike in there, and now in 2019, it was a little more also. So we're pretty excited about those. We've had, those two years have been very smooth for us. It's kind of nice for myself. If I would've came in and we'd had that much of an increase the first year, probably it would've been a little too stressful. So I'm glad that I have almost five years under my belt and were able to look at the situation and adapt to extra help, extra sales, extra inventory, and all those things in there. Now, I do want to also point out that those are sales dollars right there. So we do have to factor in that we do have increases from our suppliers. So there is a small percentage in there that the cost of goods has lined up, and that does factor in to more gross sales. But if we take a look at that, we don't just look at the sales dollars, we also look at our transactions. And in 2018, we had 11,000 extra transactions, and that's pretty, that's pretty sweet. So far, year-to-date, we're up 3,000 transactions. So in two years, that's 14,000 extra transactions. And that is really a number that we look at that is going to help and sustain our business because we have the traffic flow in there. I always like the phrase, it's like, let's get people in the door, and then let's figure out how to make money from there. And I think that is really the key. If you have any questions, anytime, feel free to interject. I wanted to put this slide up here because each month, we are filling out this analysis of the month. And if you don't understand it, I'm going to go through it, but feel free to stop at Spirits, give me a call if there's a number on there, hey, I don't understand how you're coming up with these numbers. But on the top of that, it just breaks out, and this is from 2018, the percentage of sales. So just an example, in January, we do almost 5% of our business. You look at October, 6% of our business, 6.2%. But it is really nice to break out and say, where do we, where do all those sales dollars come from, and where the transactions come from? And these are the different percentages in there. So our July sales comparison, you look at right here, we have 2018, and I'm having a hard time reading that, but it looks like it's 592,000. And in 2019, 662,000. So we had an increase of 70,000. And if you look at our budget, what we wanted to, our goal was, if we went back a slider, 18% of our sales came in July. So that was our goal, is to have 18% of this budget, which was a little over $3 million. And we exceeded that. We're at 22.1%. So those are numbers we really like to look at and make sure that we are obtaining our goal or exceeding it. And if we're not, then we need to take a look and say, okay, what factors were in there, and why were we not exceeding it? And one thing with our business, we are really dependent on weather. So if we have a 4th of July that is cold, rainy, that can really put a dent in our business. But for the last, literally the last five years, we've been very fortunate on weather, and we're thankful for that. So then you jump down here, and you look at, we have our merchandise for resale. It shows what, how much inventory I have in there for 2018 to 2019. And you have the payroll in there, other expenses, total expenditures, and a lot of numbers. And once again, I don't want to go through every one of those numbers, but I just wanted to make sure that we do put some time into this chart, and we do really appreciate it. If you look at it, and if you have questions, always feel free to come, stop at Spirits or just give me a phone call. Some of the noticeable changes that have helped our business that we look at, we invested a lot in the sign, and we do feel that it's paying off. So in some of the ways that we use our digital sign is, we use it for our sale items, we use it for our Help Wanted. We used to have that, which I thought was kind of cheesy looking, but we had to do what we had to do at the time, that sandwich board outside that said Help Wanted. Now, we can put it up on there, and I really have seen better success from our digital sign. People stop in and saying, hey, I saw that you were looking for help, and I'm just seeing what kind of positions you're looking for. We also have mentioned to our community that we're always, we're always willing to put community events on there. And one of the things, we really depend on our community to help us, and we feel that if we can help them in return, it's going to definitely pay dividends in the long run. Now, I just wanted to touch really quick on this. There is a 15-second delay on that. And I know when that ordinance was passed, we never had any digital signs in the city, and we came up with that number. And I really would like to, down the road, have the council and the committee take a look at that and say, you know what, that might be too long. Because if I had everybody in this room right now close their eyes for 15 seconds, we'd be like, wow, I didn't realize 15 seconds was that long. So just something to look at and think about, and we will bring that up to the board and appropriate council in the future. This year, excuse me, this year, we did purchase a open-case wine cooler, and we put that up front, and we did, we actually wanted to have a really nice one. We wanted to have that as a statement when people walked in the store. So we spent a little extra money on this cooler right here, but it is very appealing, and people come in the store, they're like, wow, this is a nice, clean store that is not just put together here and there with some afterthoughts. So we're really happy with that. We have noticed a huge increase in sales from our wine, our cold wine compared to where we had it in the back of the store. So one of those, these are one of the decisions that we definitely made the right decision on. Each year, we do a Taste of the Holidays, and we coordinate that the exact same day that Shaffer's does their Taste of Nisswa. And we have about 200 people that come through the door. We sample about 60 different types in there. We have great prizes. It's always the first Thursday in December, and we do it from 4:00 to 7:00. We get, this year, we're going to give away a 50-inch flat-screen TV. Each year, we give away some really nice prizes. The nice thing about that is, all those prizes cost us, didn't cost us anything because we worked through our suppliers, and if we buy, let's, an example, if you buy 25 cases of Windsor, we'll get a free TV. And that was one of the situations where we were able to, I believe that was a Windsor deal. So it's kind of nice when we can give away items that do not cost us anything. Going back to what we're talking about, helping on the digital sign, we also help our community in any way that we can, and I just feel that it's really important that we help our community. So this does take some time, but we help the Pequot Lions with the wine tasting, wine and beer tasting. We helped, we helped the Vikings Children's Network last year through Miller get donations, and that was $800. The Soup Kitchen, $1,500. Nisswa Fire Department, that program just ended, and it was $2,500. We worked with the Nisswa Lions on their purse and tool event, which they raised about $4,000. And we, that event, I spent a lot of time on it. We donated a lot of products. When I say we did, I got our suppliers to donate. And I bet it was probably about, well, I factored in that the products that we donated and the time and everything was about $4,000. So if you add all these items up, we helped our community raise over $10,000 in the last 12 months, which I think is pretty awesome. How do we stay current at Spirits? I like to visit local and non-local liquor establishments. If I'm in the cities, I like to stop in and see what they do at their store. A lot of times, most of the time, I have my camp, my phone with me. I'll take pictures and see what products are, they feel are hot, what products they're showcasing. Then I take a look and say, hey, am I showcasing that one or not? And just evaluate it to our store. We go to the Minnesota Off-Sale Tour, we did an off-sale tour with Ross, Terry, and myself. That was about, that was probably about a year ago now. We went down and we visited about six or seven stores, and we got some really great We also attend vendor trade shows, see new products, and participate in MMVA Annual Conference. That's always in the spring. It's an event where Terry and I go to, and we, it's a three-day event, and we always get some great ideas through that. Coming up this next month, we are going to attend the Regional MMVA Meeting up in Bagley. It's just, it's a nice event where we'll sit down with other managers, and we'll see what's working for them, what's not working for them, how they deal with their suppliers, and pick up just little ideas here and there. That's it. Do you guys have any questions? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good job. Thank you, Brian. Good presentation.
Thank you.
We will now move on to reports. City Administrator, Number One.
Good evening, Mayor Edman, members of the council. I don't have anything outside of the items under New Business tonight for the council, unless you have questions for me? Okay.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Good evening. I've got the same script as Jenny. Any questions?
Nothing. You've got nothing?
I've got a couple things maybe coming up here, but other than that...
Zero charge for tonight. And Mr. Howland, City Engineer?
Good evening, everyone. I'm from the truck back there. I'm guessing I'll be probably at 9:00 or 9:06, so we'll go back, please, just sort of wait until that.
Okay. Thank you very much. New Business. Item E1, Approval of Preliminary 2019 Tax Levy Collectible in 2020. A is resolution approving preliminary 2019 tax levy collectible in '20, and B is approved Truth in Taxation meeting date of December 18th, 2019. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we set the preliminary levy at the level presented, and I believe it's 9%. Is that what we're asking for?
Yes, so the preliminary levy number would be $2,553,493, representing a 9% increase from 2018.
Right. That's my motion.
Okay.
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to vote for it, even though I don't like it. I'm voting for it under the assumption that when we get down to the final number, it's going to be substantially less than what we're proposing tonight. So under those conditions, I'll vote. Otherwise, I wouldn't.
Yeah, I think we're setting it. My understanding, you know, we're setting it here. We can't set it higher later, but we can always cut it, so...
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next would be approving the December 18th, 2019 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we set our Truth in Taxation meeting date for December 18th, 2019, 6:30 PM. I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That too carries. Item E2, Request from the Nisswa Chamber to Close Main Street on November 29th, 2019 for the City's Light Celebration. 31.
Hello.
Holly, hi.
Good evening. I'm Holly Holm. I'm the President of the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to get in front of you to do a simple request, and that is to close the road temporarily for our City of Lights Celebration. This is a request on a personal level and on a work level. I attended this event last year as a visitor, and I was with a family member and her two children. And quite honestly, my cousin, who I was with, said she would not return to this event because the road was so hectic. My request is somewhat vague at this time because we are in the early stages of this, and we have a committee formed, and we're trying to work through these things. But really, what we're looking for is Lakers Lane potentially down to Main Street Ale House or Lakers Lane to Ganleys, that area, that type of thing, just Main Street. We do close the Turtle Parking Lot as well. We have the Reindeer's there, Santa's there. That's also a big drop of people, and I don't recommend vehicles traveling through that parking lot. We have food vendors there as well. Just kind of looking to see how your thoughts are on that and what you think of this potential request.
So a question that I have for you, Holly, is you said Laker Lane. So is it from Laker Lane to Ganleys? Is that what you were saying? Or are you thinking all of Laker Lane?
No, no, just that intersection. I had to pick a point. So Lakers Lane down to Ganleys. Really, the whole feeling that we'd like for that event is just to have a easy flow of foot traffic so that people can meander through. It's kind of that vibe that we're looking for. And reality is, the horse and wagon go from the square, they exit out onto Main Street, go around where the donut shop is, donut station, and then down through the alleyway, and they just do a loop. I really would like to see no cars in that section, just to give more space for all of the visitors that we bring into the town that day, that night.
So just a question that I would have, I'm not opposed to that. Question I would have, and this may be more for the Police Department, is if we were to close that off from the intersection at Laker and Main Street, going north, people would be able to come in and park, but would that create some issues backing out and leaving? And would those people even be leaving? Or would they just be parked there for the whole time? That would be one question that I have.
If I could just briefly, I did ask our Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works Departments for their input and feedback on this, and certainly concerns about emergency vehicle access was brought up, and wanting to make sure that however, whatever the setup was created, that it could be easily, once we move pedestrians out of the way, we could get a vehicle through if needed. Plowing considerations for time of year and some of those things. So we're in conversations with that, and we'd like to continue as they work out more specifics about what they'd like to do. We'd like to be able to work some ideas with them and see if we can make that happen. Certainly because that's, what's the flow and how is that going to work? Wanting to make sure we touch all those bases. So we've been, we've been discussing it internally.
Has there been any, excuse me, any discussion about closing Main Street, like at the post office, from there all the way down to Ganleys? Just so that traffic would then maybe, and then where the turtle races are, and have just direct traffic around the backside, past City Hall, and then back out over Church Street?
So ideally, I was thinking of the post office intersection all the way down to Ganleys. In reviewing it this afternoon, I did, looked at an aerial shot. I have maps. Would you guys be interested in looking at some right now? Okay. Just kind of was thinking, I don't know if that's necessary. I'd hate, I mean, I'm trying to create this cool vibe of an event and not give up the parking spots, and I understand that. I also understand, though, that even if we did close off that entire section, that would be roughly 87 spots from that entire length, we're still going to have over 87 people into the area that are going to find a spot to park. It's much like Freedom Days. I mean, there's just not enough parking, but people make it happen. They make it work.
If you were to close off the street, is it necessary to continue to close off the Turtle Race area? It could be an alternate parking, because then you could put the reindeer and stuff in the street.
Right. It could be.
Food vendors in the street.
But we still want to make sure that we have access for emergency vehicles to get through. But I think if there were no vehicles on both sides of the road, the road is definitely wide enough to bring a fire truck through or a police officer. Yeah.
I think that could alleviate some of the...
Yeah, I think that there's lots of options, and we, as a committee, would discuss those options. We're just kind of looking to see if it would even be considered.
Have you brought this to any business owners and thought...
There's a couple of Main Street business owners that are part of the committee, and they are all for it. Yeah. We're also having a community meeting on October 10th, and I wanted, and I will be inviting definitely all of downtown to that meeting to discuss not only this event, but other events. I would like to talk about all of the events that the chamber hosts, to talk about road closures and any other things that is on their mind, because I'm hearing a lot of rumbling in the background from people, but nobody ever comes directly to me. So I'm going to throw open the door and say, what's on your mind? It could be an interesting meeting.
I know. I'm not opposed to it, but it would be nice to see a better, you know, kind of more of a finalized idea of what you want.
Right.
But I think that you might find that closing the whole street would be easier than just half of it, because that creates another problem of its own, right?
Yep.
But the alleys can work to get vehicles through as long as nobody parks there to begin with, so...
So we know that we need, we need a lot of volunteers to monitor these intersections.
And your signage, it's not going to work to do an 8-by-12 on us.
Right.
It's going to be like a detour sign or something to it, yeah.
So maybe, just as a, maybe answer your initial question.
Yep.
As a group, is there anybody who's opposed to closing off any part of Main Street for the event?
No. I'll make a motion.
Well, I don't know. Are we looking, are we looking for a mo, I think that what I'm hearing is, it sounds like they're still talking about what they, am I correct? It's still in, it's still being developed. You're just asking if the council is like, heck no, we're not even interested in that?
I think the plan would be for us to meet again as a committee, make a more definite plan, and then come back and get the motion.
Work with city staff on it.
For sure.
They could get, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you probably want it by the next council meeting, because then you're a month away.
Right.
So couldn't we make a motion just to authorize city staff to work with them and figure it out?
We could. I think they're already doing that, but if somebody wants to, we can, sure. I don't have any objection to it.
I was going to go further than that. I move to reapprove the closure of Main Street from Ganleys to Main Street Ale House on November 26th for the City Lights Event from approximately noon until 8:00 PM, subject to public safety requirements.
Okay.
So from Ganleys to where, Don?
The Ale House.
The Ale House?
Yeah.
Okay. So the full length of the street?
Wonderful.
Anything about the Turtle Race area?
I didn't include that. If you feel that you need the Turtle Parking Lot, we can include that in that, too. You need the Turtle Parking Lot?
I don't want to say yes or no at this time because I...
You could come back and ask for that later if you want.
Okay, that'd be great. I mean, if you wanted to include it in the motion, that way it's all covered.
I think it's a good alternative parking.
Yeah. I mean...
I don't have a problem with that, whatever.
City staff will, will work with all of the details anyways. We can provide just the final design information to the council so they, so you know, once we got that worked out.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, you guys. I am pretty excited about this.
Yes, looking forward to it. I think it's actually a great idea, closing off some of the street, or closing off the street. I think it, just make it, give it a lot more of a festival feel, you know?
That's the whole plan.
I mean, it certainly had that in the past, but with all the vehicles down each side of the street, it...
It just makes it more of a challenge, and I feel like this is going to make a big improvement to this event.
Definitely talk to the Catholic Church, too, because that parking lot is always underused.
Oh, it's used for these events.
Well, yeah, but I mean, there's, even if, I mean, there's, always seems to be room there.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, item E3, a resolution approving county project within municipal corporate limits. And we are referring to County Road, I always get them mixed up, 13, 18, 13...
13 and 77.
13 and 77.
Yes.
So I think we touched on this lightly at last month's meeting, that there's two separate things that are happening within the county. One is, they are currently looking to just keep, I shouldn't say just, to keep the project moving forward. And an important piece of that is the city's consent for them to do so. And that's what we're looking at this evening. The second item, the way I understand it, if we're having conversation with Tim Bray, is that at a future time, probably three to six months from now, they'll be back to have discussion about cost sharing. And right now, there is a, I believe, a 40-page document that's gone to the county commissioners that they're reviewing, and will be giving feedback to the Highway Department in some time to come here. So I think, I believe, what I understand with that question is that before the county comes back to the city with any cost-sharing discussion, that this new policy will be in place, and we'll look to follow that. Don?
Question, just what happens if we don't approve this resolution?
Your Honor, members of the council and staff, the two motions we're looking for tonight are strictly to address the mid-dot approval of state aid to go to bed. for tonight are strictly to address the MINDOT approval of state aid to go to bid. With that, we do have a cooperative agreement that needs to be finalized yet. So these two resolutions actually allow us to legally get approval by MINDOT, use state aid funding, and go to a letting. With that letting, then we'll have an identified contractor. We anticipate that about November, toward the end of November, and then come back to the city council. Hopefully, the county commissioners have moved forward with a favorable cost participation. And currently, the draft would be more favorable to the city than current conditions. We don't need that to move ahead with letting with MINDOT. We need these two resolutions, they require those to get approval. It's kind of between the county and the city on the cost. Of course, there is a cost component. I'm not saying there isn't. And after we have the contractor, we'll actually have better numbers, and we'll have new guidance from the county on what those numbers are. There is a point after the bid, as you know, that we award to the contractor. I know the county will wait to award until we actually know what the costs are to the city. So we will be back to the city as going county and a consultant to look for that approval after the bidding.
But the question was, what happens if we don't approve the resolution? What happens? That was the question.
MINDOT will not approve the plans, and we cannot go to letting.
So there would be no improvements at the intersection at that point?
It would delay the improvements until such time the city approves, yes.
It would basically stop the project temporarily?
It would hold up the project, yeah. And our goal is to get a let in November, get a contractor on board, because we do have some tree removal and utilities to get relocated. So we want to get the trees removed so they can relocate the utilities and get this done. And the right-of-way, the county has worked forward to purchase the right-of-way, except everything is bought at this point, except for a small portion of Wendy's with an easement that is in eminent domain, and they'll have possession November 29th.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Don?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
So if we, if we approve it, and the county decides to change their policy in such a way that it's not beneficial to the city, what can we do about our consent at that time? Anything, or are we just stuck?
I can assure you, the county is not going to move forward without having a cost cooperative agreement because that means they'll pay for 100% with the award to the contractor. So we know there's a cost component to the city, and that needs to be worked out. Once, and we'll have better numbers once we actually have a contractor that has bid.
So if we approve this tonight, you guys can continue moving forward, get your, do the letting, and like you say, try and get going with some of the clearing and et cetera, move things, et cetera, move the project forward. But again, if the, we know that if the policy stays just exactly the same, we know what that dollar amount is. If it goes to the way that Tim, or Mr. Bray was hoping to get it done.
Yes.
That dollar amount would drop down lower for us. But is there any possibility, and I guess maybe this is putting somebody on the spot, I'm not trying to do that, but is there any possibility that the county is looking at changing the policy to where it might cost us more?
That's not, it's not part of the draft, so...
Okay. But the county board has a...
Well, they still have input on it, but I don't think that's the goal of this, you know, policy that's in place. The goal is to spread the sales tax money to the local communities, and that's why this was put forward in front of commissioners. I have a feeling they'll give input, but I don't think that, I think the main goal was to try to spread the sales tax money.
Okay. So what would you say, we're probably looking at 80% or so, that it's either going to stay the way it is, or it's going to go down? Our cost.
Well, if I...
I agree.
Yeah. Do we know, I mean, what the county board is thinking?
So the one thing that I can respond to that, John, is in talking with Tim, the meetings where he's presented his ideas, and then when this draft, it was presented, he was not redirected in any way, is what he told me. So there was no negative input given by any of the commissioners. And that's probably about the best that there is.
I have had the opportunity to talk to one county commissioner, and I'm satisfied that, I don't know what the final number is going to be, but his intention is to bring the cost to the cities down from what is currently in their thing.
So the project has to happen. I mean, something has to be done at the intersection, we know that. So it's just the, I guess I'm, I think we're all in the same boat, honestly, where we're all a little uncomfortable not knowing the actual numbers. But then again, that's not, that's, they can only do so much.
And then that comes, that will come, in a sense, in the next phase. I mean, right now, there's consent being asked for to move forward, to get bids to find out what costs are.
Correct.
And then to possibly prepare for a contractor. There's going to be another discussion where a presentation of some sort of a cost will come to the city, and then there will be discussions as to whether the city agrees to those or not.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Mayor, based upon the discussions we've had tonight, I'd move the resolution as prepared by staff.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Hoff. Any more, any further, any discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on this next one, I had a technical legal question, I think. The county is asking us to not allow parking basically along the county roads. My question legally is, can the city post no parking signs for a county road right-of-way? Or is that the county's responsibility to put no parking signs up, not the city's?
Sure. Well, how about if we, how about if we introduce it into the meeting, and then we have comment on it? So item E4 is resolution relating to parking restrictions. And your question and concern is, your question is, is do we really, if I'm hearing it, is do we really need to be involved in that? Or should the county just do what they want to do?
Yeah, they're requesting us to post no parking along county roads. And my theory is that if it's a county road and it's county property, I don't know if we have the legal authority as a city to put up no parking on a county road. Or should that be the county's responsibility to, I'm not opposed to having no parking, I just want to know who's responsible for it. That's all.
Mr. Mayor? Members of the com-
If I could address that? Please, please do.
The no parking resolution in this case is somewhat ambiguous, and it's even kind of foolish to ask for. But MINDOT does require, as part of their housekeeping items, that we do get no parking resolution. In this case, they just want to make sure that parking sign will be put back on the street for a section that's not built to accommodate it. So they want that confirmed. So it's kind of a housekeeping thing. In the case that there is no parking, there is no area for parking, the county would do the signing in that case also.
Okay.
So it's...
That helps a lot.
Somewhat of a needless request, but MINDOT wants confirmation that we're not going to park cars out there after we get done.
Okay.
And there's no parking now. This can be a real tough resolution in areas where we say we're coming down Main Street, and you want to take parking off. That's, it's very contentious, and that's why they've gone to this resolution, just to confirm that with the city.
So just to get it into the, into the minutes of the meeting, the county is, is, as part of the improvements and hearing that's part of what the state would likes for their housekeeping.
Correct.
That the city would put up no parking 1,700 feet each way?
No, the county will take care of the same.
The county will take care of it.
You're just confirming you agree with the county and no parking.
Okay. Okay. 1,700 feet west and 1,500 feet east of Highway 371.
Correct.
Okay. Motion?
Well, the attorney said it was legal, so I'll vote, I'll vote for it.
I'll second.
Okay.
You're right, right.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, mayor and members of the council and staff. Appreciate that. And we will, we will be back after we do the letting and keep you informed on that. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Item E5, request from Interlock and Homeowners Association to appeal the flagpole variance decision.
They're not here again?
I will, okay, if I can just briefly, I'll introduce it, but I don't see that they are present, so I don't know if...
Did they get notification?
They did. They did get notification. I don't know if this should be deferred to Tom, maybe, if this should be tabled and followed up, or if we just...
Well, this is, this is the third or fourth time that somebody in the city has looked at this.
Yep.
They were, they were given adequate notice to be here tonight if there's concern. They chose for some reason not to show up. I would say that we fulfilled the legal responsibilities we have on this.
Well, let's, let's, I would just like to hear from, from Mr. Pearson, get his, get his thoughts on, have we met our legal concerns as far as the city goes? Because that was one thing that they questioned, I guess, is did they get their due diligence or whatever they were looking for?
Well, I think just for the record, we should put into the record that this came about because of a letter on behalf of the Owners Association dated September 5th suggesting that the action that was taken at the earlier meeting to deny the variance was ineffective because of the fact that they didn't have notice to be at that meeting. So in response to that, Jenny and I conferred, and she put it back on the agenda for tonight for a reconsideration, if that's what they wanted, and then did notice then that that would be happening, so that they could have their day in court, so to speak, and try to persuade you that the denial of their appeal was appropriate. So now, having been given that notice and an agenda spot to complete their case, nobody's here tonight. And so I don't think that means you have to do anything necessarily by motion tonight. There's really no action step here. If you wanted to make a motion to uphold your earlier denial, I suppose you could, but there's nobody here to plead their case. They've had notice, so I'd say this is a closed matter.
Okay. We will move on then.
Okay.
Item E6, council direction to final size of wastewater treatment facility plan. My first question is, and we kind, we do have an, I should say, I don't question, my first comment would be, is that I appreciate getting the information about whether it is possible or what, that the MPCA would allow us to build a larger pond and not have an equal-sized spray field to start with. It's nice to hear that they are willing to, to do that and grow the spray field as needed in the future. And of course, gallonage would be based off of spray field capacities, not pond capacities. I also appreciate getting the dollar cost of $330,000 to increase the ponds, or the pond to the larger size. I think that's helpful information. If the, if we decide, if the council decides to go with option B and, and pond size, that would be, that would be, that would go with that, what would, what might the cost be to do the 200-plus ERC pond, or another pond to get us up to 800 ERCs in the future? With $330,000 to expand to 800-plus ERCs now, if we were looking to do that in five to 10 years, but basing it on today's cost, because we don't know exactly what the cost in the future would be, what would that likely be? Mark, do you have a rough idea?
Well, Jenny and I exchanged in the meeting on information on that. And, you know, in $220,000 for your facilities plan, if you were to construct a, you know, an additional cell, 10 years, but in today's dollars, the cost, you know, in today's dollars, to construct that 200 ERC, or 220, would be around $580,000.
Okay.
Is, you know, proportionate, you know, for, you know, for that. So...
And from what I gathered from the information that we have, adding on to a pond is not possible or practical, one or the other. Is that true?
That is true. I mean, from the standpoint of, you know, you're constructing, you know, it's a PVC line pond, and, you know, the PVC line, everything's buried below the sand. And the other thing is, you do what's called a water balance. You've essentially proved that the MPCA holds water, doesn't leak, and meets their criteria. And in the future, if you're ever to, were to be able to dig down and, you know, connect into it, one, you would have to re-water balance that. So one, you're taking that entire cell out of commission for the, you know, the whole construction season it takes you to do that. So you, then you have the logistics, what is, staff doing, the wastewater flow in the future, 10 years, while you would try to take it down. So I can say, well, yes, anything's possible with enough money. It's not practical to expand a cell, let's, you know, take the 6 acre cell, expand it, you know, plus say to 8 acres. You're at, it's going to be more cost effective just to go build another 2 acre cell at that quite, you know, at a high monetary rate, let's say $580,000, you know, to construct that at a later, at a later time.
Plus inflation of the years.
Yeah.
So then, it may not, it just says I've been pondering this and, and so on, and know that there's some other discussions going on in the area. Spray field, if we, if the city was to purchase property to accommodate the ponds for 800, whatever, ERC pond, expand the spray field to the 600 and, was it 20? We would be good to go for a fair number of years. In the future, there'd be, I think, help me here, but I think there's probably three options for spray field. One would be to expand the spray field. Second would be to go underground with all of the distribution. And third would be potentially, well, third would, could be maybe some sort of mechanical, which probably isn't the best. And fourth would be if discussions over the next 10 to 15 years had, come together, and there's a line that would tie in most of the east side of Gull Lake and other lakes that the spray or the effluent could be sent down the line. So there are, so there are three to four options for that in the future? Is that fair to say?
Yes. And I would say the one, I'll say a suboption to that would be, let's just, you know, let's say you have 67 acres of spray irrigation area. You may decide to take 10 of the acres and convert that to subsurface because you can get, you know, three or four times the water with that 10 acres, but still keep your, your other surface irrigation.
Sure.
Just for the flexibility that that has for, because if you go subsurface, you're going to be dealing with nitrite levels, total nitrogen, and it would just provide the city, hopefully your energy recommend, keep your options open on the up going. So as you work, sometimes drink colder weather, a little harder to run the nitrification, de-nitrification process. So I'm just offering that, that would be a subset there, you know?
Sure.
A good one.
And then, I guess, another probably kind of a subset would be the fact that there is a potential option to go from 36 inches of wa, of effluent onto the surface up to possibly 41?
Well...
That could be a possibility.
Well, it is, I mean, I'll just offer that, the state hydrologist has offered that in the past, that as the state's getting more and more information on, you know... past, that as the state's getting more and more information on, you know, whether it's breezy point, he quite likes this on irrigation. Right now, you know, staff has operated, you're going to be approaching, you know, 44 million gallons this year and, you know, you've successfully put that on your irrigation areas without any issues now. And so, that, you know, they say in a future, 10 years from now, if you've been very successful at it, when you redo your SDS permit, you know, that's the one thing you could do. You can work with the state and potentially petition to go to 42 inches or, you know, 45, some number that, you know, that, I'll just say theoretically, you could add, if you add additional six inches over 67 acres that you have now, well, that would be picking up another 10 acres by putting that six inches. So, yes, so that is also, we shortly discussed it. And I'll just offer, I mean, when the city originally started with spray irrigation, I mean, the state, they actually took your SDS permit and decreased your irrigation rate in one of your permits in the early 2000s, based on the history of spray irrigating when you started up in 91. You had quite a few issues because your spraying industry rose, you know, so I'll just offer, you know, you've been kind of on a roller coaster application rates. So, I won't say, you know, based on what you have now, probably a fairly low probability that the state would ever decide to decrease your 36 inches. But I'm just, you know, another thing would do that, there would be time, that would almost force you then to look at some type of subsurface, combination of subsurfaces global and irrigation. If global warming or whatever changes things so you can't apply as much, so.
Global cooling, probably.
Or the way around.
The ground would be froze too much. So, I mean, that kind of helps, that answers my questions. I mean, that helps me understand just spending, the thought of spending some additional monies on ponds today and then understanding what and how many options there are for effluent and whether it's spraying subsurface down the line, adding more, whatever, that we have numerous options that the city can look at down the line. So, that answers the questions that I've had. Don, you're-
Well, I just wanted to make sure I understood. At the last council meeting, I think the motion was to go with B, option B. And after a little bit of discussion, we decided to have the engineer take a look at the expanded area that the mayor was talking about, see how much that might cost, and they were to come back. Right now, we have option B, which was made in the motion, and we have to let the state know by, what, Friday? Final plans or something like that?
Yeah, that's correct, September 20th is the POC public conference period.
So, we, I don't think we need to make any additional motions tonight because we already did that last month. We voted to go with option B, right? I'm just making sure in my mind I know where we are. There's no other official action that we need to take tonight other than what was already done, correct?
My opinion was that the council was leaning towards option B. You wanted to see what that cost to add the size of the pond would be, and then you would make your final decision based on do you add to the pond or not tonight. So, you'd either stick with original option B or take option B and add.
I thought the motion was option B.
I don't know that we ever actually voted on it.
But after the fact it was added, we'd like to look at the size of increasing the pond. So, there's an unknown there, and so I think to have some clarity now that you have a cost number to that. I'm open to feedback if you didn't feel that way.
I mean, I know we talked about option B, whether it was officially voted on, I don't remember.
That's, I guess that's why we brought it back tonight, was because you wanted to have one more piece of information to make sure that you were going the direction you wanted to ultimately decide on.
Well, feedback, Mike, what are your thoughts?
I guess I'm-
Well, I guess B or modified B, option B or whatever other thoughts you have.
After talking with Tom and whatnot, I think option B would be adequate, you know, it gives us enough room to grow without over-spending ourselves to where if growth doesn't happen, then we're not kind of behind the eight ball. So, you know, then if we do, there are options to go underground with the current spray fields to help alleviate some of that stuff. So, I guess I'm good with option B. I wouldn't be strongly opposed to go on option B with the asterisk, so.
John?
I think option B is same. I think option B is adequate. We need 30 new acres versus 41. And I also think that the, you know, again with Tom, we've discussed this for, I think he's tired of seeing me discussing it. I think they holler, but, you know, I think we got, especially when like Mark alluded to, if you do some stuff underground and keep the spray field and slowly work it in, we're good. The number, I mean, I don't think any of us will be anywhere around, and there may be a much better option by the time we run out of the ability to cover what we have with option B, especially if we start having, if we start going underground or they do allow us to spray more over the top. By the time we max out what we'll have, there's, who knows what it'll be, but there might be a much better option to the city at that time. So, I'm good with option B yet.
So, just a question, a clarification. This would be for Mr. Hallen. So, I've just heard that talking about spray field options underground option, would the pond in option B be large enough to handle more spray or?
Dispersed.
Yeah, just, yeah. Or does it come back to a pond being under, or ponds being undersized and having to spend extra money there? Because both of you guys said, well, there's, we can do things with the spray field. Totally agree with that. If the pond isn't, my concern is if the pond isn't there, having more spray field doesn't help any.
I asked Tom that question too. My understanding is it doesn't matter if we build an 800 ERC pond or 830 ERC pond versus a 620 and we fill it, that pond isn't going to be large enough if you switch to underground discharge and you increase the amount you can put down, so you increase the number of ERCs that you can continue to sell. However, at some point in time, regardless of how big a pond you're building, you're going to need to build another pond just for a holding system till you can discharge everything underground. Did I understand that right, Tom? So, if we build an 830 ERC pond and we fill it, even if you change your ERC or your discharge so that you can discharge more, you're still going to have to build an additional pond of some size, probably, maybe, you know, whatever it might have to equal to hold the water, hold the effluent until it can be discharged. So, that's why, that's why I'm still at the 620. That's just why, because it doesn't, it sounds like it's really, at some point in time, if we were to switch our entire acreage to underground discharge, we'd be north of 4,000 ERCs that we could actually include in our whole overall plan. But that's going to require additional cells to hold anyway. So, did I explain that right?
Pretty well.
Or Mark, either way.
The point I was trying to make is if you build a 600 ERC pond and you start to go underground, like you said, you're going to need an additional pond to meet the new capacity because you'll now have way more discharge capacity than you have treatment capacity in the pond. If you build an 800 ERC pond and you go underground with the surface, like I told you, we could theoretically go up to 4,500 ERCs. Well, at that point, you would need at least one more 800 ERC pond to feed that 4,500 ERC discharge zone.
So, no matter what we do, assuming we max it out, before there's a different option, maybe a better option, maybe some other way to do it, you're going to end up with another pond somehow, eventually, most likely.
If you go-
If we go-
Yeah.
If the city goes beyond an additional new 800 ERCs versus 600. And that's where, I'm sorry, but I'm not connecting the dots with what you guys are saying.
The ponds aren't matched to a subsurface-
Right.
-discharge.
Right.
So, no matter how we do it, we're going to be kind of skewed one way or the other. So, when you start to go underground, you're going to be forced to build an additional pond either way. You know, if you go 600, 800, as soon as you start going underground, you're likely going to have to add more pond capacity.
And that's just a hypothetical, if we decide to go that route-
Right.
It's so far out in the future that nobody knows.
Or if you max out the pond, 620, 800, then you say, we're done. Everything from that point on is-
I guess for me, for me, where I struggle is, you know, we were talking about 420 and obviously that was too small. We had two other options put on the table, a 620 and an 830, and I like the idea of going to the 620. I think comfortably we'll use that capacity, be able to pay for it. When we get up to the 800 or beyond, we don't have any firm commitments from any of our developers who are telling us they need all this capacity. No one is coming in prepaid for ERCs. So, to me, it's a matter of how much comfort you all have that those ERCs are going to continue to come in. They're there, you know, we've been told that there's up to a potential of 800, but to date, none of them are guaranteed.
But at 620, we could absorb another 200 if we did some stuff underground.
I think that's a different conversation.
Yeah, it is, but anyway, you would ask-
I think you want to deal with today's problem.
You would ask me what my opinion, I'm still an option B, so.
Try to keep it simpler.
My reasoning for thinking about bigger ponds today is the fact that you cannot add on to a pond. So, to do that somewhere in the future, we are probably, instead of looking at the city, looking at 330,000, thereabouts, we might be looking at 700, 800,000 at that point in time. Spray fields can be added to meet that need in the future and it isn't impacted in quite the same way that a pond is. You know, if we could just add on to a pond economically, that's one thing, but to, and this, so in my way of thinking, and I'm not big on spending money, but 330,000 seems like a very inexpensive option to set the city up for many years to come. And for sure, something will change with spray fields and underground and whether it gets shipped down to Mississippi or, I mean, whatever, there's going to be discussions in the future about that. But the ponding that would be needed either way to maximize that right now, to me, makes sense because it's about dollars and what dollars in the future cost. That's my concern.
I wouldn't be able to answer this question because I haven't done the calculations. It just occurred to me to think of it this way, but maybe the question to ask is, okay, if you build your 800 ERC pond, it's another $300,000, you know, what is that, what happens if you only can sell 600? How much extra do you have to raise the rates on those 600 connections to pay for those 200 you may not use? And using that same philosophy, if you bought the land, so now you're up $600,000 total, 300 for the pond and 300 for the irrigation, how much, if those 200 ERCs don't sell, how much would you have to raise rates on it? Maybe it's not a significant number and either way you'd be comfortable. And it would give you some more information, I think, to-
Well, and that's where, in a discussion with Jenny, it's like, I mean, and this is not, doesn't, is not meant to be a criticism, but I struggle when we get down to the 11th and a half hour and we really, in some ways, haven't explored all of this, you know. It's like, how does that impact the, you know, how does it impact the cost? You know, does it, does ERC cost go from $10,500 to $10,700 or does it go to $11,300? Or does it go from $9,500, you know? To me, I just refer, I go back to business all the time because in business you make decisions, you get all the information so you can make a wise decision. And as much as I've kind of worked at it here, I still don't feel like I quite have all of those, all of that information.
I think one of the things that, none of us have all the information because we don't know what the future is going to hold. So, it's, we're all kind of guessing.
Well, I think I can answer this somewhat simply but quickly. You take 600,000 extra you would need to upsize the pond and to add the extra acreage to go to 800. If you only sold 600 connections, you'd need $1,000 more from each one of those 600 connections. So, we're proposing a $10,000 connection fee. You'd have to raise it to 11,000.
You know, it's, you're doing that from day one?
Right.
But you're also planning for 800, so it's-
Right, but you're not selling that last 200.
Right, I understand.
The economy goes to hell, you can't sell that last 200. Your original 600 people, if they paid another $1,000, that last 200 is paid for whether you use them or not.
Yeah. And then the last 200, if they do get used, then it's all going into a slush.
Right, you're getting better prepared for your next expansion.
I had a discussion with the mayor of East Skull Lake, and it was interesting, when they did their two systems, they have a spray field system for the north end and a pump it into the river, whatever that's called on the south end, they actually planned for quite a bit more than what they thought they needed. And in the end, it's actually worked out very well for them. And it has, because of the, looking back, the years, the dollars that were spent then compared to today's dollars, they're like, that was one of the smartest decisions we ever made. And that's where I base a little bit of my thinking on is, you know, we're looking today into the future and, but there's other communities and we could kind of do this with our ERCs. We could look into the past and you can see the benefit of spending in today's dollars versus 10 years from now.
Of course, some of the politicians in Washington today are saying, we're all going to be dead in 10 years anyway, so what's the difference?
And you know, if we had like Mark Roney or one of the developers here, you could ask him that question. Okay, if we go this little extra size, each one of your connections is going to cost you another $1,000, is that a deal breaker? Well, if you're talking $400,000 houses, what's $1,000 one way or another? In my eyes, you could play it one or two ways. It's a little conservative, go 600, or you could go, hey, it's not really that much more, let's go 800, we don't have to talk about this for a long time.
Another calculation that I wonder about is, you know, this number of like $10,000 per ERC. In 10 years, what's that ERC going to be, ERC cost? I mean, if it's projected to get 3% a year, you know, that cost is going to be going up. There'll be more money being paid in. You know, I mean, to me, to me, there's a lot of banking, financial stuff that- You know, I mean, to me, to me, there's a lot of banking, financial stuff that really should be laid out here to really help understand. You know, it was like I said, talking with, you know, another community who has both styles and actually oversized, dang, they're really glad they did it.
I'll throw one more thing at you. When I worked for the city of Avon in the year 2000, they built a mechanical wastewater treatment plant. Their city's very similar sized to Nisswa. It was $7 million in the year 2000. We're now 20 years forward from that, and our biggest option doesn't cost that much.
What was that plan?
The city of Avon is very similar sized in finance to Nisswa. In the year 2000, they built a new sewer plant to replace their ponds, and it cost them $7 million at that time. We're forward from that 20 years, and we're building a plant for less than that $7 million, even at 800 ERCs.
I also found it interesting that, this is a little side note, but in a community of whose annual budget currently is 800,000 a year, they built a $6.9 million sewer system where, I mean, you know, I'm like, wow, that's a, I mean, that's a whole different take, you know? I mean, their whole annual budget for everything is 800,000, and they spent $7 million, 6.9 million when they built their sewers. And again, they're glad they did it.
I think when we were looking at the connection fees, you fast forward 20 years with inflation adjustments, I think we were looking at, what, 18,000 roughly at year 20?
No, I think I just calculated, three years, you're already at 12,000 with a 3% increase.
Looking back, in 1995, we paid 3,700 per connection.
So to me, if it's about money, my personal feeling is, the smart money is to increase the ponds today. That's my take, and I would be in full support of that. So that's all I have to say.
That's how the table's been, very quiet.
I'm in favor of Plan B. Good valid points all around. I don't know, I can go either way. I just, yeah, I hate spending money on an unknown, you know? Things have been great here, growth has been great, but you just never know. You just don't know what's going to happen. What if things sort of stagnate and we don't have the growth? And we spent 300,000 that we didn't need to spend, but the ERC discussion makes a lot of sense, factoring in the, or the connection charge, I'm sorry. Factoring in inflation, fact that it would only be 1,000 bucks, so.
I think the place where you run into trouble is if you build 800 ERCs and only 200 come.
Yeah.
Then you're, and it's not, I don't know if you'd be in real serious trouble, but you'd see your user rates go up significantly to help offset that, at least for a short time.
Things would have to get pretty darn bad for that to happen, though.
I would think so, too. Like you said, none of us have a crystal ball, so we don't know.
You know, another, I mean, it comes down to, just in my way of thinking, is short-term planning and long-term planning. You know, back when we did the sewer, when the city did the sewer 20 years ago, had the council at that time said, no, we're going to have two kind of ugly recessions, would they have gone, oh my God, it's all going to fall apart, or it could fall apart? The reality is, there was no issues at all. And, you know, I was just thinking and asked, you know, Gary, maybe you could figure it out. If you take 300,000 and you divide that into 20 years, which is the length of term that the sewer is, what's that cost per year?
I need to calculate for that.
15,000.
Huh?
15,000.
So the question comes down to, then, if things get so horribly bad that we're all afraid that we're going to lose our homes, is $15,000 really that unaffordable? You know, that's kind of, that's another way I look at it. To me, to me, it's a wise move today. It's a very wise move.
So if we do this?
That's like 1.1 ERCs per year.
Yeah.
15,000, 1.5.
And if we, if we decide not to go subsurface, because that's considerably more expensive, but if we, well, I guess we have money in there to buy extra land, so would some of that neighboring property we've talked about be enough capacity if we did get to the point where we were?
I guess that was one question, or one thought I was just going to share, too, is can we get enough land to go to 800 ERCs today?
And I'd like to, I'd like to just step in there because my belief and guess is that we won't need to think about 800 ERCs for 10 years at least, but we've designed the ponds to do that. In the meantime, we can, we can talk more with the state about their two pieces of property. We can talk with neighbors to the east, we can talk, we've gotten some estimates. We don't have to buy land today for 800 ERC sprayfield. We can negotiate with those parties over the next years for that. And maybe something else comes along where we pipe it somewhere. I mean, I, you know, what we need today is enough sprayfield for 620, ponds for 800, and then we can work on land over the next years. And, you know, again, to me, that's the smart play. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I'm not saying do the 800, 830 ERC system completely today, just the ponds. Work on the land and the rest of it in the future.
Right, but if you're going to do it, it's silly to do it if you are going to not be able to get rid of it.
Well.
And it's, sure, it's easy to say, oh, we'll figure that out, but what if all that land gets developed? What if subsurface, for whatever reason, we can't do it or it becomes too expensive?
Right. And I, I just had a little, brought this up to Jenny, that, you know, regardless, we should probably be talking more with the state and putting a pry bar under them to, and letting them know that we really want and need that land. And it seems like with the state, it takes time to warm them up to ideas. But we have the state property that we can look at, we have property to the east we can look at, east, straight east, straight east off the sprayfields. I don't think we should let that go for 10 years, but we could have two to four or five years to negotiate all those things out.
Is there enough room on that state property for a pond? I can't remember how many acres it is.
The parcel on the east side of Shark Drive is 8 acres, that's with the state. They have a 6 acre parcel and an 8 acre parcel.
But if that was contiguous with the 30 to 40 acres that the city has now, that would all be helpful. I just think that's, I just think the sprayfield piece is something that we can have conversations on upcoming. It doesn't have to be decided.
I'm going to raise a question, partly just, you know, for your advice, so good discussions on the concept, but, you know, Option B, so everybody understands it, you know, has, you know, that was going with a, you know, adding 32 acres of irrigation area in the cost estimate. That means you have to go out and purchase about, you know, I'll say about 15 acres of property in order to get, because you need perimeter buffer on that and everything. So I guess, as we work to a, you know, a decision tonight, if you're saying Option B, I want, you know, staff and I are getting clarification, well, then, if it's Option B, and you're going to build all 32 acres new, you know, under 20 acres you currently own, but you also have to go out and get that 10 acres. So I just, you know, there's that, you know, that, or was it, I'll say a subset of Option B, okay, well, build Option B, we're going to expand and go to a larger, you know, secondary cell for, you know, that, but we're just going to build then on the 20 acres we currently own, and we'll worry about adding the 10 acres, you know, in the future that we would need for that Option B pond capacity. And the reason I'm asking that is that really changes the dynamics of the project schedule and everything if you're going to get property purchased and get that, you know, get that design done here yet and into the NPCA here before Christmas. So I guess, you know, I heard, you know, with, last Monday, great, just because you talked about Option B, but, and I guess, because part of the information I gave to staff was, you know, well, great, kind of Option B, but if you were to construct that and then also, but just build the 20 acres of irrigation, it's just 20. So I guess there's that, you know.
Possibility, you're saying? Well, I think, I think we're, what we're discussing is just Option B, like you stated, with going to get the extra 10 acres, or Option B, getting extra 10 acres with a bigger cell.
Okay, that's one of that thinking, the one is that, I need to know what everybody else is thinking.
Not go on Option B with, oh, getting the extra 10 acres and putting on the 20 acres that we currently have. I don't think that's anywhere on the table.
Doesn't, yeah.
Right?
I haven't heard it.
Yeah.
And then one thing also, you know, the, you know, what I put on paper were examples for your, you know, your discussion, your information. One thing I can offer, too, is, you know, knowing the lay of your 32 acres, the contractors and everything, just, you know, when we, when you get into the actual, the actual design and stuff, you know, we can be looking at, let's, you know, what I'm offering, let's say how it lays out, if we talk to the state about getting a couple of acres, you know, it very well could be that it lays out fairly economical, I'll say that the new, I shouldn't say economical, but fits the land well. Maybe I come back, you know, and as you're planning through this and to say, you know, it really fits good for about a 700 year pond, okay? So don't just think 620, 820, you know, that's what I'm offering is, you know, I think the mayor is a very valid place, and that's what I'm offering. I'm giving them, you know, giving you a feel of how this group is thinking, and that's, you know, what I'm also looking at, as we start to look at the design, we can kind of see is that, well, maybe it's not adding 1.6 acres of new pond, but, you know, maybe it works out that, you know, we're really looking at a cell size, you're looking at that gallons, maybe it's somewhere around 22 million gallons that works out for property you have and how the piping lays out and everything else. And I'm just hoping I would give you that guidance, that, you know, you're going to, based on the earth moving and how it lays out, you're going to build that pond size probably almost as cheap as you can build a 1970 because of earth moving, clearing, rubbing, whatever goes with it. And I would advise you then, as your engineer, this is all the numbers are coming together. I agree, if you can afford to build, let's say, a 700 ERC pond now in 2020, you know, then I would recommend that. But, and then, but if I, because you can see, the Option C, that's getting kind of, it's getting 800 feet long, where I'm offering, you know, start to get that, but I got to start moving a lot more earth because I'm going further to the east where you don't have your natural hole dug already. You know, these are general scale of numbers, so until you actually put the contracts together, start putting actual earth numbers that you're moving, I guess what I'm just, you know, we can be a little more flexible as we talk about final project costs and the engineer's estimate, you know, in the month of November and in December, how this is, you know, the NPCA, we just have to give them a general badge, what we're, right now for the PFA dollar amount. We can fine tune whether we're going to end up at 620, 700, 500, where we're really going to end up at with a, as a group, you may want, you may have your, once Jenny has a number looking at and you can correct the numbers, how it works out, or a final ERC cost could be, as you start to be comfortable with that, then we'll come back and we'll see what we can get then for the largest secondary pond for those dollars that you kind of already fixed.
So what we need, so, thanks for that, Mark. So what we, as we look to make this decision tonight, and the PFA or whatever the heck all these acronyms are, if we, just, just help me understand, if we pick a low number tonight and then we want to raise it in three months, is that more difficult than if we have a slightly higher number tonight, but we scale back in the months to come, working with the government agencies? Does it matter one way or the other? Does it make a difference?
I'll just say, they're flexible, you can go either way. I mean, you know, the PFA is very clear, they, they have a lot of dollars for loan money, and that's really what the city, that's what you're, you're not, I'll say, you know, another say, where you're trying to get grant dollars, you're not even in that category with them. So I'll just say, from the standpoint, the power would be, there would be less complications regarding the schedule if you made a request, or I'll just say 5.5 million, and you decided to come in less. It's really until you, because until you bid the project next spring and really get a feel where you're going to be, then, you know, you have the ability to move dollars up and down all through with the PFA. Right now, you're trying to give them a scale. And what I'll just offer, try to hit the scales at about 10% of where you want to be. In other words, if you think you're going to be at 5.2 million, you know, don't tell them 4.2, and they come back for another million dollars, you know, from that. But, sorry for the long answer, Mayor, but listen, you have the flexibility with the public finance authority to move up and down because you're really talking about loan dollars.
So setting a loan dollar amount is what we want to do tonight, roughly. That's the next step, correct?
Yes, I mean, right now, you're on, you're on the IUP for 4 million. If the city's going to decide to revise that number, we need to get that revision in here by this Friday, yes, and everyone.
I think with the leeway that Mark is talking about, that I think going with Option B is safe, and then if it ends up being that we can get, you know, 700 or whatever out of it, then we can talk more about that come the spring. If we have the leeway to, you know, to bump it up and if we have the desire to do that when spring comes or when the plans come in and estimates come in. That's my opinion.
My thought would be, I mean, 330,000 certainly fits within 10%.
Agreed.
That certainly could work. We could also just, we could also raise it 3 or 500,000 and then back it off in the months to come based on how things lay out, too. You know? My concerns are, as I've stated, spending money wisely today, and then just right now, it's like getting a good number that they, that the city, that the staff can work with so we don't box ourselves later.
It sounds like the rest of it will work its way through on its own.
I think the hardest part you're going to have today and in the future is securing enough land.
Right.
I think figuring out how to pay for it would probably be the easiest thing to do, or the easier thing to do.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, somebody make a motion. I'm still on the fence, but.
Why don't you make a motion?
Well, because I don't know which one I want to do.
Well, you'll decide if you make a motion. Go for it.
Boy, you guys are quiet.
I'll make a motion that we stick with Option B like we did at the prior meeting at this time.
So hang on.
Discussion on motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Option B, dollars.
And as I said, as we work through the project, and even as we did, you know, this, you know, staff can much know more about land acquisition and where you're going, and I'll just offer you, you know, we, even next, I'll say April, after you've ordered the contract, if we decide to like expand the pond fifty feet this way, pick up an extra 2 billion gallons of storage, you have that flexibility, so. up an extra two billion gallons of storage, you, you have that flexibility, so, I mean, it's not, that, that's, that's one, you know, we're not doing that reinforced concrete with rebar design and everything else, so it's fairly, we, we have some flexibility as we move through this. I mean, I think you've set a good scale of where the city was gonna be with this, and, you know, gives staff, Tom, some, you know, and that's some room to work with, you know, whether we end up at six-hundred or seven-hundred, you know, ERC volume at a hundred-three, well, you know, yet to be determined. More importantly, is just, is, I think, I agree, is making, you know, going ahead with a larger irrigation area, and trying to get settled on the land, if possible, because it really, it's kind of, you have, it's a nightmare to burn out much clearing and rubbing and earth movement and stuff you're gonna do between various parcels, so, as he, he's pretty much hit the nail on the head, your, your land acquisition is your biggest variable, and that variable also impacts your construction costs a lot more. The pond, we already know where it's going, and that's pretty well fixed, but if we gotta start running extra thousands of feet of water distribution piping, and increase pump sizes, and we gotta pump it further, that's what you really need to try to get, get an handle on here if you can. Tom, Tom, nailed it right there.
Okay, good. Thank you, Tom. Okay, moving on, item E seven, recommendation for planning and zoning commission, beach blanket ordinance.
Is that a movie, the sixties with the net full of chil-?
Well, we need a special kind of blanket.
How many blankets can somebody have on their beach?
A little background to why this came to light is, every now and then, the DNR will reach out to us with violations, and then it kind of is our chance to take it and go on the enforcement side of things, anything over the OHW, which is the ordinary high watermark. The problem is, is we don't have any ordinance on beach blankets and the standards with installing them, permitting, et cetera, but the DNR does. So every now and then, they'll reach out to us and say, hey, there was, you know, X amount of cubic feet dumped of sand at this location, we need you to go to enforce it, but we don't have anything to enforce, because we don't have an ordinance. So I basically just took the state and the DNR standard, and just kind of copy and pasted and put it into our codes that were with standard across the board.
There's so many different applications for this, for a beach blanket idea, anywhere from just building on top of current sand gravel, to three feet of muck with bulrushes and swamp weed, how do we, how, how does the DNR really deal with that? I mean, in the water?
Um, that's a great question, I don't really know. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer for that one.
I was just, maybe, I don't know if it's gonna address your question, but a neighbor of mine was just in contact with the DNR, they did a lake testing from the lake, or fish testing from the lake, they noticed a subsurface change in, you know, I don't know what a density or whatever it is, which allows them to them access from the, from the land, so I think that's how they, they can test it, some, in some way, if they could get in there and see something from the lake, and then give that, allows them, you know, the DNR know.
This is all-
Yeah, but then, for us to enforce it, I think it's her, them just passing it on to her, or us saying that, you know, these, this property is in violation, enforce it.
And this is all above the OHW?
High watermark, yeah, correct.
So, we, we don't have any jurisdiction over anything under the water, that's DNR.
Yeah, but it gets, it gets pretty messy in there.
Wow.
So I'm, I don't, I, I'm just, I, I really don't understand how this whole thing would work very well, I mean, it's easy for the DNR to have some rules, and then if they see, think something's not right, to call a city or township or whatever, and say, hey, there's a problem, enforce it. I do believe we probably should do some sort of, have some sort of enforcement, but at what expense does the city do this? And how does the city get paid to do this, if it turns into a court action? And so that's probably-
Or trained, and what to look for, and-
Yeah.
But with this, I, I talked to the county about that today, um, it's, DNR does the same thing to the county, um, and anything above the ordinary high watermark, they asked the county to take care of and enforce, so what the county did was they adopted the state shoreland, um, rules and stuff. What they do is, they go out, and if it's a violation of the Shoreland Protection Act, then, for example, they've had it, um, I know two on Whitefish and one on Pelican, where they actually removed bulrushes and stuff, but they also, but it was above the high watermark, it, they changed the contour, and they built a nice big sandy beach, and for the, the contractor or the developer did, and the county went in and made them replace everything. So those places were sold with sandy beaches, a, don't have a sandy beach, they made them replace it, because they can't do what they did. The DNR does have jurisdiction over, from the high, or from the water edge to a thousand feet back, they could enforce this on their own. They, they do this to everybody, pretty much, it sounds like, as you, you deal with it. This is if I want, what I'm, you know, if I wanna make a beach on my property above the ordinary high watermark, it's, you can only go up to six inches, um, you can only add sand to that twice, you know, period. They've had places where this is, where the, the ice has heaved it up and destroyed people's beaches, and they're allowed to, to basically pull things back into the property, you can't push it back out, but you can pull it in, so, um, that's happened before too, they were, the person I was speaking with had, had mentioned that. Um, one suggestion they had, one thing I noticed, there's no penalty in here. It doesn't tell us what, what can we do, um, for one thing. Back to your point, uh, what's the cost of enforcement? How often do we, will we need to do it? One thing I'll say is, I, I think that we, as a city, could probably deal with our citizens a little nicer, than maybe the DNR would, if we forced them to come in and do it, you know, we might be able to work with them a little bit, and soften the blow, so to speak, as opposed to the DNR, so I like that aspect of it. But one suggestion that was made, and Tom, maybe you can speak to this, we may not even need an ordinance if we just simply adopt the shoreland standards from the state.
Well, I think you're, I think you're saying that's what the county did.
Yeah, yeah, you know-
Is there enforcement with those, though? I mean, according to your question?
Don't know. I, I, I'm assuming there, I, I believe there is, but I, this was just a suggestion, I mentioned that to, to Brittany as well, so-
If I can interject, Jenny and I are working on an enforcement policy for the entire zoning ordinance, just because at this point, it's kind of the Wild West, fly by the seat of our pants, decide when we're gonna enforce stuff, and at what timeframe, so we've been working very closely together to try and get something, you know, I realize that each scenario is gonna be a little bit different, but if we can at least have guidelines to get where we wanna go, and then to answer your question on how often this may come to be an issue for us, since I've been here, I've had two reports, so it's not a mass amount by any means, but-
Sure, but two is significant.
Right, yep.
You have two and three?
Beach blanket specifically?
Yes.
Well, I would, I would like to table this, and have staff work on this more, I think, if we're gonna do something, I think we need to have teeth. We don't have teeth, let's not go there, you know, why, why have more rules that have no teeth?
We have a lot of ordinances that don't have teeth in them, right now.
Well, that's what they're working on, that, that's what they hear they're working on, correct?
Well, wait a second, though, I think what they, I think what staff told you is they're talking about some uniform policy about when enforcement actions are gonna happen, your ordinance does have teeth that would address this if you were to pass it, and that's the general ordinance provision that says any violation of this is a violation every day, and it's a misdemeanor, and it's a this, and it's a that, so there's, there's something built into your ordinance now to enforce all of its provisions, penalty-wise, so make sure you keep that, those two things separate.
And if some neighbor decides to rat on his next-door neighbor and say, he's doing it wrong, and, well, we'll have to say, we don't have an ordinance that says anything about it, we can't do anything about it, at least we have something on the books.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I just, it seems to me like it's a little early.
I guess what I'd ask is for clarification of what you would be looking to see in this, or if you just want more time to even think about that, I don't know what we-
Do we want, one question would be, do we wanna consider adopting what the county has, something similar to that?
I think this is.
Is this, is this the county's?
Um, the DNR and the state.
DNR and the state, yeah.
Which I, my understanding is they operate basically on the same, I did get an approval letter from the state saying that it qualifies to meet the minimum standards. If you're concerned about the teeth side of things, though, I, I agree with Tom, that we need to modify that section of our code, by proving this policy, it wouldn't, or, sorry, this ordinance, it wouldn't, um, go for or against that, because that's something we have to do down the line, no matter what.
And, you know, in certain cases, I, I certainly agree with Councilman Ryan, that local can be a little kinder, but usually, the people that do these sorts of things, they know damn well before they ever started it, that they shouldn't be doing it. So, from that perspective, I'd just assume the DNR sent their bulldogs after them, and we stayed out of it, because it gets into a legal tangle that, we don't, I don't know that we wanna have staff dealing with. If we need to, great, but I'd just as soon tell the DNR, man, you guys got the bulldogs, and you got the teeth, why don't you, you guys do it, if you want a letter of support, we'll give that to you, but you guys go for it.
Yep.
You know, I don't know if they're trying to avoid sending their people to courthouses to arm wrestle with stuff like this, I don't know where they're, I don't know why they don't want to enforce their stuff necessarily. To me, it's, I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm in agreeance, I just don't know that city staff is, and our legal counsel is, should be doing it when the DNR has the authority to do it. And if we do, then we need to make sure that we have a very simple, clear-cut, that whatever, if you're in violation, you're paying our court costs to fight you, sort of thing.
We have that now.
Do we? Why don't we ever use it for anything? It's always like we have to go through these months of letters, and, I mean, stuff like that, and, you know-
In any enforcement action, for instance, one that we were in recently, we never got to that point, so the run-up to it is something we can't assess to them, but the minute that we have any kind of enforcement action under our zoning ordinance for any violation, we can always go civil, sue them civilly, or we can, we can prosecute from my office a misdemeanor for ordinance violations, and in either of those events, the cost to do that ultimately, if we're successful, does get passed on, harder to do it in the criminal side, because of the way the criminal process works, and so, depending on what we're into, that, that can dictate whether we go civil or criminal, but the, the larger point is, there, there is the ability to pass on those enforcement costs, if we go that far, and we already have that in our ordinance.
So that's kind of the teeth of what this is?
Correct. Because this, if you did this tonight, as Brittany is suggesting, and you set aside the idea of whether you want further exploration with shoreland ordinance, or the shoreland rules, like the county's done, but if you, if you pass this on her recommendation tonight, the enforcement tools are already embedded in your ordinance to enforce it.
Okay, that's helpful to me. But I still, but I still think the DNR is better to fight those battles.
Well, if they won't, that's the point, and that's what she's saying, is that it may be their purview, but they won't do it, and so there's a gap in, in, in that process that leaves the city without any ability to ever even talk about enforcing it, and so, every situation is its own four squares, right, decide whether to do an enforcement action or not, when staff finds a problem, and they talk to me about it, it usually ends up coming to planning commission, then you guys about what to do, and if we got a problem like that, and there's, there's a, a ground swell to do something about it, but yet there's no empowerment in our ordinance, then we're left to say, hey, DNR, you do it, and they say, no, we're not gonna do it, and so there is a gap there, to me anyway.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move we approve the beach blanket ordinance as presented by staff, and authorize the clerk to publish a summary ordinance.
Second. Okay, any discussion on the motion? In this, um, it says, permit does not expire and is transferable in the event of property changing hands, makes sense, limited to permits. Does the teeth of the, what we have, I mean, this, this, these two things kind of protect the homeowner, says, you know, you go to sell, you're not gonna lose it, but if you're a pain in the ass, can they, can our rules, can they lose it? Or is there just no way they can lose it if they shouldn't have done it in the first place?
You have a permit to an owner, and they sell it, it's gonna, it's gonna run with the land, sort of, is that what you're asking?
Well, it does, but what if they don't, what if we get into the legal fight with them, because they didn't do it the way they were supposed to have done it?
Can you revoke the permit?
Can you revoke the permit and say, no, you just gotta put it back to the way it was?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, is that part of our, is that part of what we currently have in place? Or do we need to take a look at that?
That would be consistent with any permit we would issue, if they don't do it in accordance to what the requirements were set forth, or the size of the building, or whatever, I mean, I would, I would think we'd have a right to say that's not valid anymore, work, work with them through that.
The issue that we've had for decades, though, is, we kind of have that, but we've been run over like five-hundred times already.
Sure, yeah.
And, so, I understand we're looking to change, but I don't have much faith in the system as it's been, so, again, I'm like, I just wanna make sure that if we do something, we actually have the ability to do it, we have the intent, and we have the enthusiasm and all of that to do it. Because in the past, when I was on planning and zoning and council, people would do all sorts of things, and it was, it never really turned out very well, you know, so, if we're taking, if we're adding something more to what we're gonna do, let's not make it a miserable thing to have to deal with, that goes on forever.
Well, government traditionally is slow at doing things, but we eventually get there.
Well, and zoning enforcement's hard, I mean, it comes down to, we gotta do something now, and people are looking at me saying, what should we do? I've got no good, real good options, we're not getting out of it for all of our dollars spent, and it ultimately comes down to, you gotta invest in enforcing your ordinance, and you're not gonna get paid back to do it, and what's your, you know, philosophy on that? Either, yes, we're gonna do it, or no, we don't feel like doing it, it's an age-old question, you can ask any city attorney about what the right thing is to do to spend dollars to enforce zoning ordinance, and there's just no easy answer for that, it just isn't. But you do have staff who's telling you that they're committed to, to finding ways to enforce ordinance provisions, and, and make a policy for that, and all you can do is try to find those best practices, and then everything is, as it comes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation from- Recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding sign landscaping ordinance.
So a little background on this is, must have been between two and five years ago, any sign that was applied for had to come before the planning commission. And there was a general consensus that if you were going to put up a permanent sign, there had to be landscaping underneath it. Well, when we went from it going to, in front of the commission for every sign, to an over the counter permit, that kind of got lost along the way. And I've been informed by commission members that they would like to see that brought back, where even if it's some, you know, perennials just underneath, or some wood chips, something to make it not look like just a post with a sign on the top of it. So that's what the goal of this is.
Is grass a problem?
Depends what kind of grass.
They have yellow grass now, and they have blue, true bluegrass. I mean, it's blue, blue.
I would make motion to approve the recommendation from Planning and Zoning on sign landscaping ordinance amendment.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E9, Recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission Regarding Conditional Use Permit Ordinance Amendment.
So this kind of goes back to, as you were saying earlier on, a lot of our enforcement has kind of fallen short over the years. And so the goal of this ordinance is so that when we grant a conditional use permit, we put conditions on the, on the permit. And so this is saying that if you are still having outstanding conditions, I'm allowed to enter your property, just, I mean, obviously not buildings or anything, just go on your property to see if the conditions are being met. This was brought up because there's a lot of very long lots in the town, so from the road you can't see anything, much less, you know, details. So this is kind of just to help us with that enforcement side of things.
Counsel, motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Conditional Use Permit Ordinance Amendment as presented.
Second.
Questions on the motion?
On both of this and the one just before, we should include authorizing the city clerk to publish a summary ordinance on all of these.
I'll amend my motion to include that. Thank you.
Same.
I did talk to Brittany about this too, so it's kind of nice to see her wanting to get on there. Now, Mr., hopefully, what we had to do on Birch Avenue, something like that could be followed up on in a timely manner, so.
That's not a conditional use permit, right?
No, it wasn't, but.
No, but they had applied for a variance permit. So applying for an application, we still have access rights.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I? The only thing I would say is, if this comes to pass, then we should always talk in every instance about going on property.
Yep.
At the very least, if this fact padding came to pass, we would need some notice to the landowner that we are entering their land and that they did give permission by virtue of asking for the CUP, getting the CUP in conjunction with the ordinance, so that they're on notice that we're doing that. It's always, no matter what's in an ordinance or whatever it is, it's always, couldn't be sketchy territory when you're investigating something to go on somebody else's property and then end up having whatever evidence you gathered from doing that end up being rejected later somehow. So we just need to always, every fact pattern is different. We need to just confirm about those if this ever comes to pass.
Okay. Just one follow-up question on that. Is there a way that we could do that where we have them sign something saying, until conditions are met, they have access to a property? Just not saying that I wouldn't still give them notice, but then we just have something on file at least?
I think it would be, Brittany, I think it would be part of the CUP process, and if it's granted, it would just be a stop condition.
Okay.
And something signed by the applicant saying, you know, in the CUP application, you'd put something in there saying, by applying for this, if it's granted, you are agreeing that we can enter the land to monitor compliance with these conditions. So that would be one piece. Then the second piece becomes, it becomes part of the conditions. And then if we, if we need to go on and inspect, the third piece would be the notice to the, to the CUP owner.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brittany. And just speaking of conditional use things and so on, is Sully's Storage ever going to get their trees up and things like that, that are part of their conditions?
It's on my list to follow up with.
Somebody was asking me about that. It's like, looks like it just died with gravel all over the place.
Have they paved that too?
I honestly don't know. I have no idea what they're, if they're, think they're done, or if they are done, or if they're waiting for something, I don't know.
There are other conditions that have not been completed yet.
So get after it, Don.
Get after it.
I got it.
Put on your mean eyebrows and go over there.
I do that all the time.
Personnel updates? Anything?
Mr. Mayor, did we skip, oh, I'm sorry. My, my mistake. I'm sorry.
Glad somebody else makes a mistake once in a while besides me.
It's the first one tonight.
I'll make a motion that we accept the personnel updates as presented.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? E10 does pass. Old business, request from Planning and Zoning Commission Regarding Moratorium on Commercial Storage Units Ordinance Amendment. Are we ready to go forward with that tonight?
Hope so.
Okay. Very good.
I'd move the ordinance regulating and restricting storage facilities within the city of Nissau for the purpose of protecting the planning process and the ill safety and welfare of the city as presented by staff.
Seconded by Councilman Hoff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a question, does that-
Well, that motion does carry. Go ahead. Want to change it?
What are you telling me?
Want to make another motion to add the summary?
Yeah, I was going to do that, and I thought you wanted me to do something else. Okay, yeah, we need a summary ordinance.
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You okay, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Trying to get my eye in there.
Council reports. Did I miss something?
F2.
Oh, I'm sorry, I checked it off already. F2, Council Discussion on Priorities of Strategies Identified in the Comprehensive Plan. That's a big one, actually. Should we set a workshop for that? I think we should do that. I think we should set a workshop to talk about.
Well, I brought it up last time. I asked everybody to kind of think about what their priorities would be and come back with some ideas tonight. If you'd really rather turn that into a workshop or do something different with it, that's possible. The only reason I brought it up in the first place was so we didn't take the comprehensive plan, put it on the shelf, forget about it. So that we, so that we work on it. If the feeling is workshop, talk about it a little more. That's fine, keep it, keep it on the hot plate.
I thought about that too, when you said workshop, was maybe we can all take our ideas, do it as a workshop, and just maybe set our priorities, kind of set, kind of a list of where we'd like to go as we move forward into the next year and stuff.
Yep.
I definitely have one. I did what you said.
I will just offer that if, if the council would like to send me your list, I can compile it so that for the workshop, you'd have that information. Don't have to, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as well. We can, sometime October or November, we can find a workshop date and, and definitely talk about it.
Council feel comfortable with that in the next, I mean, I don't know how much, how busy we are between now and the end of the year. You feel there's time to, for, put a workshop together, Jenny?
I would think definitely before the end of the year. I mean, you know, the next couple of months, maybe try to get one in before the holidays or something.
Counsel, comfortable with that?
Yep.
I'll talk with you about it then, we'll get something. Yeah, before the holidays would be good. Okay. Then, council reports, gee. I don't, I, the only thing that I have is that the, this discussion about communities and unorganized territory and so on, getting together to discuss any sort of possibilities of connecting sewer, sewage from somewhere, Brainerd, possibly even East Skull Lake, after talking with them. And to just start a discussion to see if, if there's, if there's an interest, who's interested, and then discussing like maybe hiring Region Five, or I don't know if they have to be hired, or how that would work, to pull groups together, to have some discussion. And ultimately, they would start doing money hunting to figure out if it's possible to get federal and state funding to do sewer from, if we were interested, from here to a plant somewhere, either Baxter, East Skull Lake, somebody who has the capacity to take affluence. And it would be, this would be a, oh, I'm sure it's at least a 10-year. Out, I mean, it's out there at least 10 years, maybe 15 years, something like that. So just to let you know that there is some talk going on in the area about that, and we may be asked to, if somebody wants to participate in that, at least, you know, having discussions about what it may look like. That's about as broad and vague as it is right now. So that's all I have. John?
I got nothing tonight.
Mike?
I'm good.
Gary?
I have five things, but I'm not going to rig any of them up tonight.
Thank you. Can I buy you a beer? Announcements and upcoming meeting dates, thank you for that, staff. And I will certainly try to remember to put that on my calendar. Anybody have questions on that?
Just a meeting date, when are we going to talk about budget again?
Without asking the council availability, I would suggest before the October regular council meeting.
October, okay.
Would that be? We'd have October, November, in theory, December, but October, November to work through the final details.
Okay.
Do you want to reach, do you want to reach out to us about that?
Yes.
I don't know if there's anything, any information you're working on anymore, if it's basically done, but if, give it some thought and, why don't you reach out to us and, and set something up?
I sure can.
On that item, I, Don, brought up there, the budget thing. Since we set it at 9%, I agree with Don, I'm sure we all would like to see it lower. Maybe we could have, would it be like just before the meeting type of thing, or just a separate?
At 5:30 or 6 o'clock meeting, I would, I mean-
Well, I just, that's what I was wondering.
Okay.
One more, that I should have, should have brought up during the council reports. Brittany came up to me before the meeting and said, you know, thanks for allowing us to do the four-day work week, or four and a half day work week. And just curious on what everybody's, staff's feedback was on that besides Brittany?
Majority of the staff really enjoyed it. They really did. They're very grateful to have that opportunity. And I actually said, I think everyone did, there was a few just scheduling glitches in the beginning to figure out some of those things, and how that worked was in a department. But otherwise, once they figured that out, I think it worked very well, so.
Now we're back on regular schedule?
Yes. And they'll keep asking me about it, so. We'll get to next summer, and then we'll talk about it again.
I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
You have it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.